Alderman Hazel, here. Alderman Concella, here. Alderman Pusa, here. Alderman Bittner, here. Alderman Randall, here. Alderman Tyler, here. Alderman Anthony, here. Alderman Ovian, here. Alderman Schaefer, here. Alderman Dillman, here. Alderman Gott, here. Alderman Steele, here. Alderman Wygant, here. Alderman Elmore, here. Alderman Wiggington, here. Alderman Barfield, here.
Alderman Bittner called and he's excused. Roll call of department heads. Okay, I believe everybody's here. Debbie Bevel's excused. Bobby Sable's excused tonight. They're on vacation days. And Jenny Gay Marv is excused. As I look around all the other Aldermen, Assistant Chiefs Bargers here for Chief Play, and I believe everyone else is present in accounting. We will handle that. A little bit of adjustment. Okay, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to ask you to please join with me and stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to officially open a public hearing. And I'm going to ask, this was requested, right Garrett?
It was.
But is anyone here, the group is...
This is the requested appeal and denial of Smart Home Pros' applications for solicitors licenses pursuant to Section 115.07 of the city revised code ordinances.
Is anyone here representing that organization? They had requested this public hearing. We had denied their application for solicitors.
Correct. There were thirty-seven applications filed for solicitors licenses for this business. The clerk's office, consistent with Chapter 115 of the revised code of ordinances, and following an investigative investigation conducted by Jim Roquita, the city clerk's office denied these, just consistent with Section 115.07 of the code. There was a timely request for an appealed hearing. The city provided proper notice for this hearing. And I know that a copy of the investigative report and the decision rendered by the clerk's office, along with the request for hearing and the notice of hearing, were provided. I followed up with an email on Friday, providing the copy of the report to the appellant, and I haven't heard anything since. That this is part of the public hearing consistent, it's an open session, consistent with Section 2C3 of the Open Meetings Act. And then this is their opportunity to respond to the evidence that was provided, in particular, the investigative report. And then you, as a counsel, will deliberate in closed session and render a decision in open session.
Yes, Alderman Randall.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Harner, could you just clarify the, under the public hearing on the agenda, it refers to pursuant to Sections 115.047? And I think that, is that a typo there?
That's a typographical error. The "for" should be omitted. But the notice that was sent to the appellant was provided at 115.07.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have Farmer Chief Jim Roquita's here, who does all of our administrative investigations. But there's no need for him to be called forward to testify if there's nobody here from the complainant that requested this. So, hearing done, going twice here. If nobody else has got any other questions, I'm going to close this public hearing. And Jim, you are free to go home. I don't blame you. Thank you, sir. Moving on, we now will open public participation. Does anyone this evening here have anything for the good of the cause that would like to say anything from the public? Anybody this evening? Okay, let's go right here in the front row first. Please give your name and try to keep it to two to three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Alicia Bradley.
Pull that down a little bit. There you go.
Good evening, my name is Alicia Bradley. I reside on South Twenty-seventh Street. I just want to refer to Communications 12A and 12E on tonight's agenda. Two years ago in August, neighbors on South Twenty-seventh Street sent a letter to Mayor Hector voicing our concerns regarding our neighborhood's safety. During that same month, we realized our neighborhood was changing before our very eyes and we had no clue. Whether we were working, disengaged, or excluded, all of the South Twenty-seventh Street neighbors realized we were not included or considered when our city leaders made a decision to rezone our neighborhood to ensure that our Lindenwood neighbors could use single slash multi-residential property for dormitory dwellings. It was at that moment that we felt devalued, unimportant, and excluded, to say the least, all in the name of community redevelopment that has never led to positive profitable gains for average, tactful citizens, homeowners on South Twenty-seventh Street throughout Belleville. But what we gained was price because we gained great neighbors with great intentions and dreams. The neighbors on South Twenty-seventh Street who have sacrificed to raise our families, enjoy visits from our grandchildren, and maintain our property values for twenty-plus, sixteen-plus, or one-year, were never selfish or unreasonable. But with our empathetic and respectful heart, with loving, nurturing parents to children who were thirty-plus or mid-twenty, were always willing to compromise to ensure that the LUV partnership and student body investments were safe and fair and that our elected officials were being truthful regarding the intent of their commitment to rezone and redevelop our neighborhood to ensure that all people prosper in peace. Needless to say, we endured much more than groin pains than were addressed as youth people by those who were elected by We the People. But we never held a grudge nor committed to being self-destructive. We were not included in the imaginary of your conversation, but because we believe in being the example, we expect to see in the world we live in, we have been diligent and engaged like never before since approximately August 5th, 2015. We plan to continually strive to support our positive neighborhood initiative ideas to build bridges and tear down walls to connect all citizens through positive communication and inclusion because we feel all voices and votes matter to make Belleville brighter for future generations to come. So on tonight, we hope that our elected officials will understand that agenda topic under Communications 12A and 12E block party request is our attempt to build bridges to heal beyond 2015. Thank you for all those for your support and deliberation.
Who else this evening? Was there a hand in the back of the room? Yes, sir.
This is Dorf Leonard Delville. The Fred J. Kern Building, Lindenwood's Fred J. Kern Building, I believe, in order, in the spirit of political correctness, I think should be changed to some other name. Fred J. Kern was a racist that overseen a building in nineteen seventy... Well, it's true.
Okay, okay, okay. Stuart, Stuart, now, talk to us about the not misinformed history. Talk to us about something current that's a concern.
Well, I think it happened...
Well, I think you have some misinformation. I'm not, we're not going to start off on those tones.
Okay, we have something here. The other, last night or the night before, I noticed a club illusion and their metal chairs and metal tables totally blocked the sidewalk. And the Belleville Taxi Bears spent millions of dollars and put sidewalk ramps at the end of sidewalks. Now, a club illusion blocks anybody from using a wheelchair or crutches or motorized. And to top it all off, when they have these chairs and tables out there, the place ain't even open. It's closed. You'd think they'd have the decency to take these chairs and tables and push them up against the wall and get them out of the sidewalk. They'd just leave right in the middle of the sidewalk. And not too long ago, some of the Aldermen were complaining about thrift stores having merchandise on display on the sidewalk, like that was blocking the sidewalk. Now, that wasn't allowed, apparently. But these tables and chairs on a closed business is allowed to block the sidewalk. And one time, Wade Square, when Don's Hardware moved out of Wade Square, some furniture guy moved in there. And I believe the mayor caused a whole bunch of problems for this guy. He went on the Grim Reaper Show and was complaining about that he wasn't getting no cooperation from the city. They just dogged him for anything he'd done. They was dogging him. And where I live, 29th and Godfrey, I think it's just a breakdown of law and order in this town. They're running the stop signs continuously, four-way stop, and there's Lindenwood's and Union School students in that area. And I told the police about it, and they said, "Well, this is happening all over Belleville." So, there is a breakdown of law and order amongst all the armed robberies and rapes and whatnot. But I don't know what's causing this, but I think it should be looked into. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mayor, everybody else, my name is Ralph Carr. I live on Twenty-seventh Street. I have seen a big change in the past couple of years with Lindenwood. I welcome it. They have their own patrol cars out. The gentlemen are very nice. And as far as the police in Belleville, we've got one of the best damn police forces in the whole state of Illinois. I'll stand behind them with everything I got. As far as his yard, whatever goes, the grass is high. But you deliver in signs all the time. There's got to be an ordinance against that stuff. I wouldn't do it to my home. And like I said, our fire department, our police department, our A number one, we should appreciate them. Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. Is there anyone else this evening? Hearing done, I'm going to close public participation. I am going to comment, Stuart. We don't have a club illusion. And we do check, we do check to make sure there's forty-eight inches for ADA because there has been, have issues raised. We check the side of the road. This time, we're going to move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. At this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to please approve my recommendation to appoint Sarah McQuillan as administrative in the mayor's office. The young lady who was in there for about six, seven weeks, has been gone for about two months, had resigned. And we have a young lady that we have thoroughly looked at and had asked for a motion to allow us to get here and somehow. So, some motion, Ralph, with Pusa, second by Alderman Concella. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hazel, aye. Alderman Concella, aye. Alderman Pusa, aye. Alderman Randall, aye. Alderman Tyler, aye. Alderman Anthony, aye. Alderman Ovian, aye. Alderman Schaefer, aye. Alderman Dillman, aye. Alderman Gott, aye. Alderman Steele, aye. Alderman Wygant, aye. Alderman Elmore, aye. Alderman Wiggington, aye. Alderman Barfield, aye.
Motion carries. Sarah, you want to stand real quick? Thank you, and we'll see you on the two days. Thank you much. You're a brave soul. I shouldn't have. At this time, I go to the regular portions of the minutes. City council meeting from August 7th. Do we have a motion to approve the topics received and filed? Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any additions or corrections? All in favor of accepting and filing the minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Claims payroll and disbursements. Do I hear a motion to approve the claims and disbursements in the amount of $3,641,195.82 and the payroll in the amount of $856,715.83? Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Anthony. Discussion on those two requests. Roll call.
Alderman Hazel, aye. Alderman Concella, aye. Alderman Pusa, aye. Alderman Randall, aye. Alderman Tyler, aye. Alderman Anthony, aye. Alderman Ovian, aye. Alderman Schaefer, aye. Alderman Dillman, aye. Alderman Gott, aye. Alderman Steele, aye. Alderman Wygant, aye. Alderman Elmore, aye. Alderman Wiggington, aye. Alderman Barfield, aye.
Motion carries. We go on to reports, treasurer's report. I'd ask for a motion to receive and file the July 2017 treasurer's report and the statement of cash and investment report from July 2017. Motion by Alderman Pusa, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Randall. Do I hear discussion on those reports? All in favor of receiving and filing for audit, signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We go on to master sewer, Alderman Dillman.
On behalf of the master sewer committee, I'd like to make a motion on 11A. But before I do that, we have a typo in this. And the typo is, it states at $7,384,377. It's actually $7,394. It should be ninety-four instead of eighty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. If that could be noted in...
We wish it would have been ten thousand to the good, but we understand. So, we have a, so your first motion is to approve this 11A1, right?
That's correct.
We have a second. Second by Alderman Schaefer. Discussion on this, this is the CSO lift station that's actually going to be worked on from E Street by St. Paul's Home over to Twenty-third Street, Wright Royce, over here behind Lindenwood Men's Dart, okay? Yeah, right there. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Alderman Hazel, aye. Alderman Concella, aye. Alderman Pusa, aye. Alderman Randall, aye. Alderman Tyler, aye. Alderman Anthony, aye. Alderman Ovian, aye. Alderman Schaefer, aye. Alderman Dillman, aye. Alderman Gott, aye. Alderman Steele, aye. Alderman Wygant, aye. Alderman Elmore, aye. Alderman Wiggington, aye. Alderman Barfield, aye.
Motion carries. I go on now to Alderman Dillman, the next motion. Sorry, probably put them together.
On behalf of sewer committee, again, 11A2, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a new tractor slash rider truck awarded to the low bidder co-equipment in the amount of $4,2,397.85, including the NJPA discount.
We'd like to have that. We have a motion by Alderman Dillman, and second by Alderman Schaefer. Discussion on this item. Alderman Ovian.
I would just like to ask, I assume that we're going to keep the old truck? Is that right, boys?
The decision hasn't been made yet.
Well, I would like to make sure that if we are going to go ahead and not keep it, that we don't go ahead and basically sell it or basically trade it in for ten thousand dollars. You said at the meeting that that chassis is good. The new chassis is ninety-nine thousand. Isn't that correct? We could go ahead and list it in the trade journal and try to sell it for fifty. Somebody would buy it because you can go ahead and strip the parts out of it and use that Vector truck in order to go ahead and strip it down. I don't, I don't want to see us go ahead and lose out and just give the truck away, the old truck.
I, we hear, and I don't think that decision's been made yet. And I think that could be going back to master sewer for further discussion.
You have up until delivery to make a decision on that truck.
It's going to take how long to order this truck?
Nearly six months.
Yeah, so, let's be cognizant of that. They're deciding some stuff. Yeah, I think it's a good point, a good point to discuss, and we'll have to have more discussion about that, okay? But the motion right now is to approve the low bidder of co-equipment for the amount that was stated here and to get this thing ordered because it will take at least six months. And this helps greatly with the maintenance program with the sewers, all the different sewers and gas stations. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Any of your questions?
No.
Roll call.
Alderman Hazel, aye. Alderman Concella, aye. Alderman Pusa, aye. Alderman Randall, aye. Alderman Tyler, aye. Alderman Anthony, aye. Alderman Ovian, aye. Alderman Schaefer, aye. Alderman Dillman, aye. Alderman Gott, aye. Alderman Steele, aye. Alderman Wygant, aye. Alderman Elmore, aye. Alderman Wiggington, aye. Alderman Barfield, aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Concella, finance.
On behalf of the finance committee, I make a motion to approve financial advisory agreement with Joy Howard in order to solicit proposals for possible refinancing of some of them. Belleville Crossing Frank Scott Parkway bonds.
Motion by Alderman Concella, second by Alderman Pusa. Any discussion?
Your Honor, I'll have to abstain on the grounds of a possible conflict of interest.
Okay, we'll note that Randall is abstaining. And this is just a really kind of a technicality. I think really, we need to, we need to have somebody on record. But we are working with the developer, and this looks like it could be a good... What'll happen here, if we can refinance and we can get these bonds paid off sooner, what, where it helps the city, I think, basically, is we could abolish the business district sooner than what we originally thought at Belleville Crossing. So, that's something worthwhile looking into, and that's why we're pursuing it. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call.
Alderman Hazel, aye. Alderman Concella, aye. Alderman Pusa, aye. Alderman Randall, abstains. Alderman Tyler, aye. Alderman Anthony, aye. Alderman Ovian, aye. Alderman Schaefer, aye. Alderman Dillman, aye. Alderman Gott, aye. Alderman Steele, aye. Alderman Wygant, aye. Alderman Elmore, aye. Alderman Wiggington, aye. Alderman Barfield, aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Wiggington.
On behalf of the streets and races committee, I think we'd like to make a motion to approve foreign contracting in the amount of $944,759.59 for East A Street resurfacing project so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Dillman, do I hear any questions? I just want to, this is resurfacing, but it's also curbs, sidewalks, et cetera, right Tim? It's a pretty thorough, like we did on East Washington several years ago. The only thing is, we talked about it in the committee, once we get this company locked in and we get IDOT's final approval on the money because it's a grant through the state, we're going to wait and see when they can start that we don't get this thing tore up right before winter hits. So, we'll let you know. If not, it'll start in the spring, but we need to get the ball rolling. So, we have a motion, and we have a second on this approving foreign contracting. Who was the low bidder when the IDOT opened these bids up? Roll call.
Alderman Hazel, aye. Alderman Concella, aye. Alderman Pusa, aye. Alderman Randall, aye. Alderman Tyler, aye. Alderman Anthony, aye. Alderman Ovian, aye. Alderman Schaefer, aye. Alderman Dillman, aye. Alderman Gott, aye. Alderman Steele, aye. Alderman Wygant, aye. Alderman Elmore, aye. Alderman Wiggington, aye. Alderman Barfield, aye.
Motion carries. We go to communications. And I'm going to, we're going to, one or two of them are going to do my roll call. But the first one, I'm going to, I'll give Garrett a break. I'll read this here. The first was a communication from 37 South Twenty-seventh Street to 200 South Seventeenth, South Twenty-seventh Street. On September 17th, a block party requested from Michael and Alicia Bradley and Dr. Thomas Trice, Lindenwood University, Belleville, to host a block party on September 17th, 2017, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. I'm going to skip down, if you'll let me. And I want to include in that same motion, if nobody's, what I'm going to ask here, is that under 12E, 2116 West A Street to 2209 West A Street, on the same date, 9/17, there's a block party requested from Dave and Jane Pusa and Dr. Thomas Trice, Lindenwood University, Belleville, to host a block party on this date from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And this is with neighbors, citizens, and with Lindenwood students and faculty. So, this is a great thing. We had one last year. This year, we're going to have two. So, do I hear a motion to approve these two requests? Motion by Alderman Pusa, second by Alderman Hazel. Any discussion on these, these first two? We're taking, we're taking 12A and 12E, and I'm asking for this motion, which we just got approved, the motion and second, to approve these two at one time. Any questions about that? We'll have the streets closed off for a shared time, and we'll work with these folks. But this is a great thing, and we thank Lindenwood and the neighbors for doing this. So, all those in favor of this signify by saying aye. Oppose? Motion carries. 12B, I'm asking for a motion to hold the City Hall rededication event on Saturday, October 21st. Kenny, they haven't told you anything different this week. I think we're still good with our timeline. This request is to close Illinois State Route 159 between Washington and Lincoln Street, starting at 7:00 a.m., and to reopen no later than 4:00 p.m. It might be well before that, but we gave ourselves a little cushion. The rededication will be held outside, if weather permitting, at 10:00 a.m., The rededication will be held outside, if weather permitting, at ten AM, followed by an open house from eleven to two. Do I hear a motion, first of all, for that item? Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman God. Any discussion on the rededication?
So City Hall is scheduled to be done significantly before Saturday, October twenty-first.
Let me back up, you might have missed the last meeting where, where I made some comments. October second, we will have council meeting at the Council Chamber at City Hall. We will start to move back Finance and the Mayor's Office the first couple days of October second. By the end of the week, we'll have the Clerk and Treasurer pretty well all moved in, we'll finish it up over the weekend, and we will be open for business on October ninth, Monday, October ninth, at City Hall. So we'll, we, this is this timeline that the contractor feels comfortable with, there's a lot going on up there if you've been passed, but we feel, we're getting down to the point now a lot of this cosmetic soon, and they feel very comfortable that they'll have it done in September. So we'll be back in it, okay? So the first motion is to approve the rededication. Any further questions on that? I'm gonna ask for a roll call. The motion was Jane Pusa, right? Did who, no, I'm sorry, it was Charlie, Charlie Schaefer and Andy God. First and second, made a motion second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Cincella.
Aye.
Alderman Pusa.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
Aye.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Ovian.
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer.
Aye.
Alderman Dittelman.
Aye.
Alderman God.
Aye.
Alderman Steele.
Aye.
Alderman Wygant.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Wiggington.
Aye.
Alderman Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm gonna go ahead, I'm, I'm using my chair discretion here, I'm gonna jump back to number twelve D real quick and keep this together with City Hall. When we started talking about the excitement of, of the rededication and all the work and effort and cost that has gone into this thing, it's been, it's been very challenging, but it's gonna look good and it's, we're not done with it, we're still wrapping things up and it's, it's not been a cheap adventure by any means. But we got talking, several of us, and we were in a conversation one day about another topic, and a couple people from Ardena Square, we got talking in my office, and the juices were flowing, so all of a sudden we said, came out that, why don't we, why don't we host a developer's gala reception, whatever you wanna call it, when with the day before we open City Hall for the dedication? And use this as a real starting point to, we've got so many new developments right now at our fingertips. Some of them are working great guns, some of them are about to be announced, some of them, Anissa's been working on with staff and Eric and I have been working meeting, and, and we feel like we're really at the threshold of a lot of new things that are about to happen. Not to mention what's happened at sixty-four hundred West Main and what's happened now, we're getting ready to have the ribbon cutting in a few days at, at the Bull Shop Lab, the Ace Hardware, seventieth and Main. There's a lot of good things happening, now there's a lot more to do. So we thought we could take this and turn it into a positive, and, and when you talk to that group of people from Ardena Square, they're, they're dreamers, and they, they have a vision, and they always are willing to promote, and they're, and they're, and at Ardena Square, they reach out to St. Louis Market very well. So we thought we would kinda, this is what the proposal is, that they would like to, Ardena Square is requesting to host a private cocktail reception to showcase the development to developers on Friday, October twentieth, two thousand seventeen, from six-thirty to nine. Location will be City Hall, food from area Belleville Restaurants, along with, there'll be some cocktails, alcohol beverages, will be served by Ardena Square, they do have a liquor license, subject to any required permits and licenses, they will get all of that. But we felt that this is a really pretty neat thing, that we wanted to present to you, that we could have the council and, and all invited, and, and have a list of developers that they're already working with, Anissa and I, Ardena Square's already kinda penciling it, they've sent nothing out yet by any means, 'cause it's not approved. But we think this would be a great opportunity to seize this moment and really try to solidify the good things that are going on in the city, and to kinda help, you know, lassle a few more of them in to, to coming to our city and, and seeing, and learning more about what's going on. So I'm asking for a motion, which is basically what I just read. Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Wiggington. Discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Cincella.
Aye.
Alderman Pusa.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
Aye.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Ovian.
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer.
Aye.
Alderman Dittelman.
Aye.
Alderman God.
Aye.
Alderman Steele.
Aye.
Alderman Wygant.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore. Alderman Wiggington.
Aye.
Alderman Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries, let me just say this, in nineteen fifty-nine, when City Hall was opened and rededicated, dedicated at that time, they had quite a, we did a little research, did a little history finding, Leander helped me at the library and he found a few things and we found some stuff, and they had a booklet, and they showed pictures of the City Hall, how it looked when they first opened it. We're hoping to do something similar. Patty Gregory has already come to me and said that they're gonna do it. We've actually talked about possibly, Eric talking about exploring, even taking some, have a place for ads, or a list of things that we still, because this thing has been much more expensive than we thought, we still would like to not put the old bulletin boards back up, but we're already at or beyond budget, and a few different items like that. So there, we're gonna put together a proposal in this pack that they're gonna do, is a, a booklet about City Hall compared to old to the new, and then probably have some ads that maybe some of the developers or contractors, et cetera, might purchase, that we can help offset some of the final little things that we still need to, to make it final. We'd like to get a few new easels to show off some of the development as it comes in in the lobby. Some of the ones we have now have tape on the legs, and we thought after spending all this money to re-beautify and rededicate City Hall, we, there's a few odds and ends we'd like to do. So you'll hear more about that, but I just wanted to explain, there is a booklet that they're also working towards. The last thing under Communications is twelve C. The fifth annual Pedal for Pooches Bicycle Run at Seven and Pause for a Cause, the Bellevue Humane Society are working together once again. This block party, this would be the fifth, the fifth year, requested from Sevens, requesting permission to close the first block of South High between the intersection of East Main and, and East Washington on that South High block, on Sunday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, from ten AM to eight PM for the Pedal for Pooches event. Now this is not a new event. I got an email today, and in the email, a business person was concerned, but their concern was about a proposal that isn't, they haven't proposed yet. It's in discussions, it was in discussion phases at Bellevue Main Street, and it's not even been brought forward for it. I think they're gonna meet with Jenny and the staff on September fifth to take this thing and try to massage it, bring it forward, and that's the dog, the dog parade that we've had for a bunch of years, but they're talking about maybe a different route or re-looking at it, because it's getting bigger. Last year we had two to three hundred dogs, and it was, it was unbelievable, I mean, it was quite the sight. The first year we had like thirty, and this is the third year now we've had it, and they were up to, like I said, a couple hundreds. So they're gonna bring that back, but that's not what this is tonight. This is the same event we've had every year for five years, and it's the same thing that we, really, when we approved, talked about this a while back, this was an existing event. So I ask for a motion to approve what I just read, number twelve C. Anyone willing? Motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman God. Discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And this is strictly in the name of safety first, and, and so this is a successful event, these are two very near and dear items to me, bicycling and dogs. The Pooches Bicycle Run is, they're requesting to close High Street from ten to eight. Benz is open from twelve to four, and I guess that's the only business that's open down there on a Sunday from twelve to four, right?
Mr. Contract, if you're giving access to the rear parking lot and Main Street in front of the store will both be totally open.
My suggestion is that we do similar to what we do in the Tour de Belleville, where there's about four times as many bicycles, where we give them the parking lane and barricade the parking lane on the entire west side of High Street, so the High Street can remain open, and lo and behold, everybody's happy if we can just put the bikes on them.
The difference is here, the Humane Society sets up, they set up an area, they have music, they set up a small stage, they set up an area for adoption of pets, and it's, it's a much bigger thing than just having the bicycle stop there at Sevens at the end. It, it's a, am I correct? You wanna explain further, but?
We're not getting any complaints from any business owners downtown on this event.
I have, of all the things, of all the things I've got complaints on, this one was not one that I've gotten chewed on. Now, I can tell you what, you know, I think, I think the email I got today, the way I read it was, there was some harsh words in there, but I think it's about the one that's still being discussed. This is the annual event, I'm not saying that everybody's totally one hundred percent happy, but I've not had, I've not had any major repercussions from this one the last five years. This has been going on, and they have adoption, and they have these services as well as music?
Well, we, we're growing it this year, that's why, to bring in other people. So we've been working, and I got a list of twelve to possibly twenty different vendors offering anything from dog treats, Bee's Craft Barbecue is interested in selling the treats they make for dogs, we got Ralston Perina as a funder, I got Tito's Vodka to Manchester Dollar for Dollar for what we raised, I have a lot of big raffle prizes. We decided to work really close with the Humane Society this year, we're really liking Katie, and we've done a lot. Now, we've made this clear with chamber members, we hosted the young professionals and picked it off with raising items for the Humane Society, and we've also worked with Bellevue Main Street on this, and they're aware, and we have several businesses downtown that are going to be collecting items for donated goods for the Humane Society.
The Humane Society has worked with the city a bunch, as you know, stray dogs are a challenge for us, and they and Animal Control, between the two agencies, help us a lot in taking and adopting out, et cetera. And, you know, the city of Belleville, we're appreciative of what they're doing, because the last thing we wanna do is get into another separate business, we have, all we can handle now. So when they do these things, and, and the Humane Society folks did come to my office, and these girls stepped up to the plate several years ago, and they had asked for help because they're trying to raise awareness, raise funds, they've done some work out at the Humane Society, that they've increased their shelter capacity and, and their adoption center type things. So, you know, like I said, we've seen it as a, but we've tried to work with, and I try to remind the businesses that the rear parking lot, we will make sure that the volunteers and the vendors don't fill up the, the lot behind, I still call it the old, old small slot, but the lot right behind Ben Franklin, that is still open for customers as well.
May I also remind, we don't use that sidewalk that runs in the side entrance of Benz, so there's a hundred percent clear entryway from their parking lot to their side entrance.
And the front main street's open.
And, and yeah, and the entrance to the big parking lot that most of their customers use. In the years past, we put things, we've got a bench in the Bellevue Dog Park and everything. With mine and Amanda's energy, we kinda wanna take something that Brian created and make this really big, and Humane Society's kicking on with their no-kill county initiative by two thousand twenty-one, and they're wanting to put an event table in there to kinda start informing people about the initiative. Trebos is gonna dedicate and donate a kids' play area, so it's not just gonna be a drinking booze fest, it's a free photo booth with your pets, there'll be kids and family-friendly activities and all kinds of other things being sold, not just.
And they did, both Sevens and the Humane Society did attend and go into great detail with Bellevue Main Street at their last meeting, 'cause I happened to be there making kind of the annual report.
I was certainly willing to be corrected if I read something about a future project that you're talking about, Mayor. But the email I got says, tomorrow night's agenda is asking for the same block to be closed on nine twenty-four. That's your date, right? Nine twenty-four?
Yeah.
So this complaint that we got, sent at least to the Alderman, I assume it went to you too, it did, is on nine twenty-four.
We're all fiber copy.
It is about this event.
But this is the event we've had for the fifth year now.
I understand, I'm just clarifying.
I'm just saying, and we didn't have.
The complaint that we're getting from the business owner is this event.
The verbal message I got was that the biggest complaint is what's being planned for the next event. So I think there's some overlap here.
I'm just letting you know what this says on nine twenty-four.
Mayor, if you'd be so kind, I, I think one thing also, and I think this is a great event, going to the fifth year, very successful, I think we have to be cognizant going down the road, you know, we closed so many streets and, you know, jump-starting a new business, a ribbon cutting and a block party to jumpstart, I'm all for economic development and growth and getting new business exposure in off the ground. I think we just have to be aware and have to discuss in this council, as charitable events come along, and this is the fifth year, this is a proven entity, I think we have to put our best foot forward when we get requests to close blocks for charitable events. Closing up for businesses is one thing, businesses downtown, there's a whole lot of places in this city where charitable events can be helped. I just think we, we just need to be cognizant and discuss it and be aware of it, we closed so many streets, brings incredible exposure to our downtown, we have a great downtown, but I don't think we can approve every charitable event that must have come to town and closed off blocks.
No, I don't disagree with you. I think we have to look at them one at a time, but I also would have to say that an event like this can bring a large amount of people downtown on a Sunday that otherwise wouldn't be downtown, right outside their store, that maybe they'll, it can be lured in and for shopping as well. So I mean, but I mean, it's just like, you know.
And is, is your stop on this event the last stop, or is it one of many stops?
It's the last stop. It starts and ends.
Starts and ends, that's.
But what we discovered is not everybody will go on this bike ride when people wanna participate, and I've gotten other local businesses and small business owners, plus big corporations, to wanna help donate. Also, for charitable events, the ones that we do is charity that goes back into our community, so it's, we're kinda raising this for the city, and if you notice, we're downtown all the time. Downtown is a big dog hub, we need to take advantage. There's a lot of people that really appreciate just having places they can bring their pets, so, and the Humane Society, like I said, we have one of the best Humane Societies and the oldest in the state, and they can use a lot of help, and they've done amazing things in the past few years, and we have a wonderful dog park now, because we've helped raise money in the past for it, we would like to help with the Humane Society as well and get them all the things they need, and I think this is a good partner, because I'm bringing in multiple community members and business owners, it's not just to benefit one business.
And I'm, I'm pretty aware of the dog park. The ten o'clock start, is that something that could even be backed up to where they're, they're only open from noon to four?
So the ten o'clock starts for the bicyclers. We suggested we weren't gonna close the block till eleven to get the party up by one o'clock, and that is setting up anywhere from twelve to twenty vendors, the Play Place from Trebos, we're gonna have a hot dog truck, we're gonna have a stage, we're gonna have local bands playing, we're gonna have Anheuser Busch sponsoring a free pet photo booth. There, there's a lot of things happening, it's getting bigger than what I thought, 'cause there's a lot of people willing to participate.
And all those things happening do require street closure, I was not aware that there were so many things happening this.
Well, previous years, it was just the block party, and we would close the street at, or it was just the bicycle run, so we'd close the street a little later, but we're trying to incorporate things to bring families down that can't do the bike run, to get bigger, reach more support.
They're gonna have their adoption open that day, too?
Yeah, they're gonna be bringing dogs in and out all day, and then we're still trying to set up a place for cats to go.
So, yes, sir.
Is this the same area we've held at the previous five years?
Yes.
Same street?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm thinking of something else that we did on First Street last year with the dog races? That was a different.
Oh, that's for the wiener dog race for October.
That's a different one, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
That's a different event, that's what the October Fest.
And we, we've talked to almost all the business owners around there, and we've gotten a lot of support, mostly.
Raffi?
I think it's the dog park, could it hold this event?
I mean, you, you wouldn't have room to park. Dog park's got about parking for about ten cars, and then from there, they'd be walking quite a distance, so, so it's, that's the biggest thing, it's just, and it's all fenced in, and it's, it's kinda, it would not be suitable. But right downtown, we have so many parking lots and that, people can walk a block or two and have ample parking, just like they do for our festivals. So it's, it's up to you, this is what we, this is, it has expanded this year, I'm not trying to tell you it hasn't, but this is the same event that we've had there in the same location, this is the fifth year.
And can I add, we decided to make this bigger and not have the annual Halloween block party, which I know they really don't like, 'cause we figured this is more involving families and community.
That was something Brian had had for a number of years.
Yes, so we're not continuing with that, but we wanna help with the dog parade, of course.
And that used to be on Saturday evening?
The, the, no, Saturday evening for the Halloween parties, and he would have the street closed by like two, three o'clock, so we're not, we're not doing that, but we want it for today.
So we have a, did we get a motion on this?
Yes.
We have a motion?
Cincella and God.
Cincella and God made a second motion. If there's no further questions, I'm gonna call for a roll call motion.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Cincella.
Aye.
Alderman Pusa.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
No.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Ovian.
No.
Alderman Schaefer.
Aye.
Alderman Dittelman.
Cincella and Gaughan made the second motion. If there's no further questions, I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Cincella.
Aye.
Alderman Pusa.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
No.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Ovian.
No.
Alderman Schaefer.
Aye.
Alderman Diddleman.
Aye.
Alderman Gaughan.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Wiegand.
Aye.
Alderman Barfield.
Aye, sir. We move on. Thank you very much, please. No petitions this evening, resolutions, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution number thirty-three oh-nine. Motion by Alderman Wiggington, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schaefer. There's only one, oh, there's two resolutions, okay, hang on. And also, if there's no problem, can we go ahead and read resolution thirty-three ten? So you include that in your motion, to read by title only, and as a group of those two. We have a motion by Wiggington, and the second was who?
Schaefer.
Second was Schaefer. Any discussion on those two resolutions and the reading by title only as a group? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Resolution thirty-three zero-nine, a resolution of support for submission of a St. Clair County Parks Grant Commission grant application. Resolution thirty-three ten, a resolution requesting permission from IDOT to close Route one fifty-nine between Washington and Lincoln Streets for City Hall rededication, October twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, from seven AM to four PM.
Mayor motion to approve these two resolutions. Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Pusa, do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Hazel.
Aye.
Alderman Cincella.
Aye.
Alderman Pusa.
Aye.
Alderman Randall.
Aye.
Alderman Tyler.
Aye.
Alderman Anthony.
Aye.
Alderman Ovian.
Aye.
Alderman Schaefer.
Aye.
Alderman Diddleman.
Aye.
Alderman Gaughan.
Aye.
Alderman Steel.
Aye.
Alderman Yagon.
Aye.
Alderman Elmore.
Aye.
Alderman Wiegand.
Aye.
Alderman Barfield.
Motion carries. We have no hard instances this evening, unfinished business, is there, I don't have any that was listed.